All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. The time being about seven o'clock depending on which clock in the room you're looking at. I'm going to open tonight's school committee meeting. We have a member who's not able to join us tonight and then we have a member who's running late, but we do have a quorum, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Just in full interest of informing the people that have shown up for the evening, the published agenda in the back, we are going to take things slightly out of order this evening because of some timing issues. The agenda item that's titled Career Information Presentation, we have a member of LaSalle who's Skyping in remotely at 7:30, so we're just moving some pieces around so that we can accommodate that request. So we're going to start with the minutes from our May 10th meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved the May 10th minutes.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? Any discussion?
We're great.
Now I looked at them, they looked good to me, so all in favor? Motion passes three zero, thank you. We are now going to go to our student representative report. Good evening ladies.
It's our last one?
We have one more. But I think we're going to try to bring some of our younger ones because they were going to do it with us the whole year, but so we're going to try to at least have one meeting all together to flow into next year.
Nice transition that way because we've had you for two years now?
Yeah, we started with Janelle and then kind of took over this year.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, so to start things out, backtrack just a few weeks ago, we had our senior project presentation which a lot of you guys were a part of and we were so, so grateful for people from the community and the surrounding towns to come in. We had anywhere from the police chief to our teachers at our school and Fowler and things like that and all the feedback that we got, the constructive criticism, it was all went to good use and all the students got a lot of good feedback from that and we really appreciated the kind of real life experience of the whole thing. I know a lot of kids were nervous, but it actually ended up being a great learning experience, so we were very appreciative of that. And so anyone who participated in here from the sounds, thank you very much.
Just kind of going back, so we have not been here for a few meetings and I wanted to just, so basically it's been unfortunate that our two major NHS events have lied on the same Thursday, but I wanted to talk about those a little bit because I'm just really proud of them. There hasn't been any real major National Honor Society like put on events in a good amount of time. So we had our World's Hunger Banquet, which was in my eyes like the biggest success it could have been. There was a, it wasn't a ton of people, but there was people that came and we raised, I think we raised 300 and we're matching that, so we're donating 600 to Oxfam America. And it was really informative and we had Gina Cummings come in and speak and she did an amazing job, people were like tearing up, it was fabulous. And then we held a Battle of the Bands event at Erickson's and we got bands coming from Merrimack Valley, we had this one really like cool band, they were awesome, and then we had some people from MHS, Joel and those people and who else? I can't remember, Keith Jocks came, it was awesome. And we raised I think around 300 for that and that's going to be going to the Sudbury Medical Clinic. But yeah, so as I end my reign as NHS president, we have AJ Noble is going to be taking over as president, he was amazing this year, he did so much, so I'm super confident in him and we have a lot of other awesome people that are going to be officers, so I think next year is going to be another great year for NHS, so I'm really excited.
Yeah, trying to follow through with half and half of the year, at least for the seniors. Our last day will be Tuesday, but we're actually coming back as a grade on June 2nd to hold a school give back day and we're going to be hosting a lunch for the teachers and just helping out with whatever we can, whether it be with the faculty, the janitors, just everyone we can as something. Student government was really passionate about and the students were eager to come back one last time, you know, to help out any way that we can, so we're really excited about that and about all the wonderful senior trips we have coming up, so.
And, you guys probably know about this, but Ms. LaBelle, who has a really close friend who taught at Stonemakers in Florida, Lori Edgar I believe her name is, she's going to be coming back with three students and they're going to be coming to Maynard High School and doing a presentation and I am extremely excited about it. Ms. LaBelle made the executive decision to open it up to clubs rather than, because you know, sometimes when you're in that kind of setting, teachers will just kind of bring their classes down to a presentation, the students maybe aren't necessarily that into it, we didn't want that type of environment for those students who are coming here, we wanted people who were interested and wanted to talk about it and really wanted to listen. So we opened it up to members of clubs or Ms. LaBelle did. And from what I know, they're going to be talking, you know, it's not going to be a forceful Second Amendment type of thing, they're going to be coming to just express their, what they think needs to happen and how it affected them and how things are going for them in Florida, what they're doing to make a change and I think we'll get to talk about it as a group and I think it's going to be an awesome, really impactful time, so I'm really excited about that.
What was the date for that again? What was the date for that again?
It's June, no, May 30.
May 6th, we have one of those.
I can look it up.
Oh, cool. Don't worry.
I would also add that Lori Edgar was a teacher here.
Yes, she was saying that, that's how her and Ms. LaBelle became such good friends because she, I think she said she taught here either 19 years ago or four 19 years, I can't remember which one, but it was very, it was a long time she was here.
There was definitely a 19, right?
Yeah, so it was 19 for either one of them, sure, but yeah, her and Ms. LaBelle have a great relationship and I think it's awesome that we're allowed to have those kinds of people come in regardless of, you know, certain views and just kind of come together and what's going to benefit us as a school rather than, you know, maybe our personal capabilities on the topic, so I think it's really a good thing here.
It's May 30th.
I just wanted to make a couple comments if I please.
Go right ahead, I've got some questions too.
While they're here, so just a really cute story about the night of Battle of the Bands, so we, it was the same day that we had the Maynard Education Foundation Spring Celebration and we had quite a number of students that were showing us the results of the grants that we had given you and that and we had to put them all at the very front and they were, you know, they were all at the very beginning of the evening because they all had to run off to the, to the Battle of the Bands, it was really, really, but you guys did an amazing job, so thank you. And then, you know, multitasking as per usual, you just amazed me with the, you know, with how much you fit into a day. And also just wanted to comment on the senior presentations, again, blown away at, you know, at the couple of years now and it's just, just the poise, the research, the, you know, you may have felt like you weren't even nervous, but it really, I mean, it was just, it was amazing the confidence in that and just, but yeah, I was sitting next to Kyle Nielsen, a past graduate of Bingham High and he was amazed at, you know, just the quality of the presentations and that and he said, boy, he turned to me and said, boy, I wish we could do this when I was in high school, you know, so it's really cool, so thank you both very much.
Cool, thank you.
So a couple of minutes ago you mentioned senior activities and I know they change a little bit from year to year, so what's on the agenda for you two this year for senior activities?
So we are kind of sticking with the norm. We're doing the baseball, the Red Sox game on the 29th, whitewater rafting and the senior.
Okay.
But I'm really excited.
I can put this off, be sorry about that.
I was also able to go to the Maynard Senior Project Day and the WAVM banquet, it's just been really great to start doing more and more and seeing more schools, it just kind of reminds me why we're here and why we're all making these decisions, so.
And I think.
Class of 2018 rocks.
Well, thank you. I think senior projects is definitely involved even in like the short time that it's been here and having advisors and teachers being part of it that are so welcoming and so eager to help us with the research and get those ideas and passions out of the students, like that's what helped spark and create such a good presentation for, you know, the viewers and we're able to get all this feedback because they're so really help us, it's just great.
I know that I was bummed, originally I was going to take a half day off from school and come join, but I had to tell Jean very last minute that a couple of teachers on my team had already taken that day off. So I hope maybe in the future we could do two events perhaps or some sort of a summary for members of the community that can't take the time during the school day.
Didn't they have Monday night?
We had that showcase night.
It was just like the tri-fold, so it wasn't like a more online presentation, but the tri-fold took so many hours, it only felt right to have another night dedicated to them.
I've been to the tri-fold thing a few years ago when one of my international students who was living with us did it and I loved that.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's absolutely fantastic. Other questions?
Well before you two ladies walk off, I know you said just a moment ago that you were going to come to the next meeting, but if you're coming with extras, then we'll just do this right now, so let me make sure that I have.
Thank you guys so much.
So thank you so very much for taking the time and coming.
It's been so nice.
Honestly, I have loved doing this, guys.
We do, it's so fun.
Because you feel so informed, I feel like.
You feel informed faster, so it's really great.
It's awesome.
And it's like we're all feeding off of each other's great energy and like getting to know the community, I mean, it's so small, so you feel like you know everything, but then you come in, there's so many different committees and people involved, you wouldn't even know, so it's definitely, you know, helped us take a bigger look at what Maynard is really about, I mean, it's 10,000 people, but there's so much more to it, so we really appreciate this opportunity.
Possibly 10,000 committees.
I know, really.
It feels that way to me.
It's like I want student government to do this and it already feels like I'm like some active member and there's so many other things you could be doing, so.
Well, just in case I forget at the next meeting, best of luck at UMass and best of luck at SC State next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for having us.
Keep them safe.
You guys know the cafeteria better than us.
Yeah, we'll meet up, we're pretty old, so.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
So just as a reminder to the people in the audience, but also we've had some people trickling in, we have a presentation at 7:30 that someone is Skyping in for, so we're going to take some of the agenda items out of order tonight. And Mauro, I'm realizing I completely forgot this call on you because I had those gifts to pass out, was there something that you needed to follow up on or?
I was just wondering whether or not the seniors were going to do their walk, you know, like.
They always do.
Yeah, I knew so, yeah, I just wanted to check because I know my kids really loved it.
It's been a big hit with my kids at Green Meadow the last few years, so thank you for reminding us and also for people in the audience that didn't know about it, the Parade of Seniors is pretty epic if you've never heard of it or seen it or.
Do we know when that's going to happen? I can find it in my email.
All right, so moving on, we're going to take the, no, the District Safety Committee update at this time.
So I'll start. Charles Gabron and Sean Perham are here and they're going to be sharing a brief PowerPoint with an overview of our safety committee initiatives, especially around the ALICE protocols. In light of the recent tragedies, we've had a lot of parents concerned about what we're doing to prepare, heaven forbid, for an active shooter event someday and any other crisis. So they're going to share that with you in a minute, I just wanted to do a quick overview though and let you know that I'd like to thank everybody involved with the safety committee, including our community liaison Jerry Colbert, who's I hear in the audience, Jerry, are you here? There he is. And of course the fire, police, DPW liaisons, the teacher representatives, as well as the administrators from all three buildings attend this meeting and they worry about the safety of our schools. In addition to this important topic, a lot has been accomplished through the safety committee and I'd just like to share a few of the things that have been accomplished that are pretty important. So both Fowler and Green Meadow have upgraded phone systems and public address systems that will facilitate communications during any type of crisis. Remail just happened yesterday, so I know the teachers were very happy that we have better communication now and they have the ability to communicate during the crisis. The safety committee's changed the drop off and pick off procedures to ensure student safety and while some of the improvements have worked, we've received parent and staff feedback and we're going to make better, more improvements and changes going into next year, so that way we can keep improving that. The DPW has increased signage to help people, guide people on our property. The safety committee led an initiative for CPR and AED training for all students at Maynard High School, which is really important as we know, that everybody be trained in CPR and AED, it saves lives, it's very important and all of our students have been taking that now and are all trained. The police found a night lock system that can be used during lockdowns, which again is a security measure, but it's a very simple thing that the police department found and that we've installed in every room, the teachers are familiar with it. And we now have an e-learning ALICE protocol training that's available for substitutes and all staff who don't make it to the presentations, just to help all this good information get out to everybody involved. So that just demonstrates some of the breadth of programming, but really today in light of all of the tragedies, I really would love Charles Gabron and Sean Perham to come up and talk about, specifically about the ALICE protocols.
Sure. Thank you very much Bob. Well, we're going to talk first just about the ALICE program, which talks about what would happen if there was an active shooter on any of our schools. The chances of ever having one are very, very slim, but because of what we've seen, we have a duty to be prepared and to make sure our students are prepared in the light of unthinkable thing happening. So we probably should stop.
I just hate coming like that.
Back to school committee, right?
No, that was fine. We're fine with that.
Right, okay, great, so we can begin.
So we started, the committee started in December of 2014, well, we started actually in the fall of 2014. I was, I came, I had been working in another school district where we adopted the ALICE program with a great deal of success and there had been some people in Maynard who had been to workshops and heard about it, so we did some studying in the fall and in December of 2014, the administration of the school committee reviewed the district safety plan and a decision was made that we would go ahead with the ALICE program. And then in February of the, of 2015, during school vaca, during winter vacation, a number of teachers from the schools, in addition to people from the fire department, police department, went to an active ALICE training session and they were certified as trainers. So we had quite a few school people that had been trained. Then we began in October of 2015 to have initial trainings of every employee of the Maynard Public Schools. And from that, from that time until now, we have been doing a number of ALICE student trainings in cooperation with the Maynard Police Department and the Fire Department. Today, we had a lockdown drill at Green Meadow, which was very much appropriate, age appropriate because they said there was an animal in the, in the school and loose in the school and what were you going to do, they told him it was a drill, so it was in a sense very age appropriate on what happened. And we can, you know, continue in each school to have drills at any time. So we, as, I do want to just mention some of the people that are involved in the committee because it's been a committee that's done phenomenal work. We have from the high school, our principal, vice principal, Mr. Karagina and Mr. Crusoe and Sarah Hazel, who was a phys ed teacher. From Fowler School, we have Sharon Seiler, the principal, we also have Sean and Laura Ginta, who is a social studies teacher. And at Green Meadow, we have Deb Holly and Susan Arsley. We also have Dr. Girardi and our, as we mentioned, our community representative Jerry Colbert, who's been absolutely phenomenal. So we have a committee that, that meets, and I mentioned also police and fire and public works and it's been great. So ALICE has, A-L-I-C-E, it's not in order, it's not, it stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter and Evacuate. It's not in that order, it's just these are the, the strategies that are used. It really talks about common sense and it started a long time ago when, I think it was 1999, when Columbine happened, a real tragedy, that a number of students were in a library and they died and they didn't have to because there was a door right like from here to that door there, they could have run out the door, but everybody was trained for years and years, the old way, like just to lock down, to stay, to stay safe, it was the common sense of, you know, get out. Okay, so are you going to do the.
Sure. So I'm going to walk you through with the acronym. Alert is the first portion of ALICE. What we train staff and students is to kind of look at things a little bit differently from the way they were before. We've had success with all three schools during multiple drills and doing different curriculum based on age appropriate levels for what ALICE stands for. So the first part is alert and alert looks a little bit different. So alert is giving out information as you see it, so if a student happens to see, looking out the window, sees somebody walking past with what might look like a gun, at that point they're going to alert someone, they're going to let someone know. And then through any form of communication, whether it's walkie talkie, the phones, texting, we're going to send that information out so that we, we can let people in the building know what that looks like. So alert is changing from using codes, using cards, all that's put aside now, alert is coming on and giving real information during real time. So it could be something as, you know, the principal comes on to the PA and says, attentional staff, there is an intruder in the building, this intruder is making his way or her way down the hallway, it's by the nurse's office, giving very specific information which allows staff and students to make a decision as to what their next choice for safety strategy is. So no more codes like Mr. Locks, it's very straightforward, there's an intruder, there's a person, they could be wearing something specific, we'll give all that information as it happens. And because as part of the ALICE initiative, we were able to install cameras at the Fowler School and at Green Meadow, so now we have eyes almost everywhere throughout the school. Because this building was new, it was already adapted for this building, but we wanted to make sure all, all of our buildings within the district had the same capability, so we have cameras at almost every viewpoint and it allows us to see, allows the principal whoever's in the office to see what's happening and can give that information accurately. So the next part of ALICE is lockdown. Lockdown is just what it used to traditionally look like, we would, you know, tell the kids we're locking down, we fumble with our keys and try to get the door shut and then I'll have them huddle into a corner because you're going to be quiet here and like no one's going to hurt you because you're quiet, you're leaning in the corner. We're getting away from that because that has been a proven method and there's lots of data to support it, that that does not work. So this is a clip from Virginia Tech, half of the campus had been trained with ALICE strategies and the other half had not and with the data that we had from that, we could see what we're doing. So why act the lockdown? It's a great starting point, it's something that we can do as one of our tools. Should the doors be locked before, during and after? At Maynard Public Schools, we decided to do away with locking the doors because when we went through the training, they told us that locking your door with the big glass panel there and the handle right nearby, that's going to buy you about six seconds. So we came up with a strategy with the Maynard Police Department and we sold night lock floor systems in, throughout all three buildings, which is a titanium pin that slides through the door and into the floor. We've tried with the police and fire department and it's, it is very, very difficult to get that door locked. So we've trained staff and students on how to appropriately use the night lock system. We're no longer locking the doors in the case of a lockdown, lockdown is going to look much different as opposed to just throwing the pin in and waiting there, we are fortifying the doors as well. So depending on the age level, we've taught students and staff to fortify their doors to the point where it's not just putting the pin in, it's pushing anything you can possibly against the doors, stacking it as high as possible, it acts as another layer of protection, protection between that and the intruder that's in your building. Now lockdown isn't necessarily our goal for the staff, but if it comes to that scenario, this will keep them safe, so we've gone over these drills with staff and students. The next part of ALICE is inform, how do we, how do we let people know that we're in trouble? There's multiple different ways to do this at the school, we have panic buttons installed at each school, we have ways to communicate with the new phone system we just put in, there's texting, there's multiple ways that we can get the information out to the front office, we've told teachers and we've had the 911 dispatcher come in and say that it doesn't matter how many people call 911, we will receive your calls, if we don't get it, the next town does and it comes right back to us. So even if we have 100 people or a couple hundred people at once dialing 911, that information gets relayed and some of the information that we got about ALICE is that the tragedies that occur, whether it's Parkland or Columbine, it all happens within a very narrow window, it's about a five minute window, so if we can cut that time down with getting that information out, getting the police, anyone here to help us out quicker, it narrows the window where any, any possible tragedy can occur. Counter is the next part of ALICE. Encounter is all about what happens if someone breaks that barrier, what happens if they get through that titanium pin, which is virtually impossible, and they get through the fortification of the door. What are you going to do if those, that intruder is in your classroom and how does that look like? So depending again on the age level, we've taught students on, you know, if you are moving around the room, a moving target is very hard to hit, now obviously we don't tell that to the Green Meadow students that they're a target, but there's different strategies we can do with that. If it's at that age level, we can play games with them, but they have no idea that, that they're being trained to do this type of scenario. At the middle school, we explain to them that, you know, if you keep moving, you know, it's, it's very, very difficult to, to encounter you. If you can distract that person with lots of noise, if you can throw a huge bucket of markers on the floor, that, you know, it's another layer of confusion for this person. So sitting down and being quiet in the corner is not going to work for you, being able to have some strategies to help you out, that doesn't work. So this is part of our training that we did with the Sherbrooke Police and to illustrate that, we have some staff members with a Sherbrooke Police Officer and he had a laser scope and he was showing that, you know, even though the laser's pointed on, at our time, the assistant principal's chest, you know, just moving him the width of a thumbnail makes him a safe, he's no longer a target. So we've taught staff and students a bunch of different strategies, again, based on age appropriate level and how to use counter. The goal for this entire strategy is evacuating, so our goal for everyone is to get out, okay? No longer staying in the building, don't become a sitting target, don't become a victim, evacuate. So our goal for them is to listen to what's going on with the information as it's happening and to get out of the building. And to do that, we have multiple strategies for them as to where they meet at a rally point, where they meet at a reunification point, which is where you would be contacted to, you know, reunite with your, your student or your child, but the goal of this entire program is to get away from harm and that's really one of our strategies.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Sure, one of the things about, that makes evacuate such a good strategy, that only in 2% of the cases has there been more than one violent intruder, so there's usually just one person, that one person can only be in one part of the building. So if this was happening, something was happening here at the high school in this room, just of all the different places in the school, all the students could go to the nearest exit and get out and that is, you know, very important. If he is inside, you get outside. We have been very strict about high school students, the last thing in the world we want them to do is to load their cars and the reason for that is that we are working very, very closely with the police and the fire and they do not want any traffic, they will shut off in case a horrible thing happened here, they would shut off the traffic and we would not want kids in any way to get to their cars. So we have established reunification points and students will be told of exactly what's happening by our reverse 911 calling and by emergency emails, you know, we won't be having any parents here at the school because they will be blocked off. And right now the unification staging area is a clock tower mill named Parkmont, that's where parents and guardians would meet up with their students in a safe, secure location. You can understand why, if it, you know, with my child, I want to be rushing to the school and see what I could do, you can understand that can't be, we can't, it would just make things worse, so that's why there's a reunification point in case a tragedy happened. And the law enforcement, the police have been very clear that their primary goal would be to locate the shot and contain the active killer. So the police and fire want us to know that they cannot, if there was a terrible tragedy, they could not immediately help victims, they have to get the person who was, you know, doing the harm, as we call them, the bad guy. And they, and we have taught the kids that if they go out, if they put their hands up and the reason they put their hands up is so that they could not in any way be misunderstood for an attacker, you know, that you'll have a kind of, you know. So we're just going to wrap this up, which should be good timing for our.
You need to be excellent.
Remember, yeah, ALICE does not follow a set of actions, there's no you shall, must, will, it's, it's using common sense. Depending on what the situation is, we may use one or two, we're all five parts of ALICE and we will always be dealing with known information and we're not going to worry about the unknowns. It's very, very important that we constantly stay prepared and when faced with danger, you must do something in a moment of decision, the best thing you could do is the right thing, the next best thing is the wrong thing, but the worst thing we could do is to do nothing and that's why we're spending this time, even though we feel that it's very, very unlikely that we would have a horrible event, but because of what's happened in this country and the fact, you know, as you said, people for Parkland will actually be, you know, visiting us, we know that is a reality of our society and that's why we're, we're training. So we hope we can, shall we do questions later?
No, we have a few more minutes to come.
So, thank you, it's always a nice reminder to know that we do have plans in place as professional. a professional educator, I get chills every time I start thinking about this. Like, it's a physically uncomfortable idea for me. I didn't, that's not why I got into education, to learn how to barricade my classroom. But I feel a lot better every day knowing that we were one of the districts that was an early adopter of the Alice protocol. The district I just worked in, we just did our Alice training, like, last month. You know, so we're ahead of the curve on that. And we have excellent police, excellent fire. The flow of communication is outstanding. So thank you for the time and effort that you put into this. And we, our presenter is arriving now, so we have a couple minutes for questions. So hi.
Hi. I was curious about the process for teaching at students with disabilities, that maybe have abilities or not be quiet at all in that situation, and how you're taking that into account, how you're creating a plan, an individual plan.
Right. And I'm glad you asked that question because that has been a concern because not every child reacts the same way. And we need to be very conscious, especially younger students, that we have a plan in place so that if, for instance, it might be some, difficult for some students to be quiet. There might be some students who need some help getting, you know, getting up. And we really need to address that. I guess my answer is on an individual basis because of the various needs our students have, but we are taking that into consideration.
I definitely agree with you. So is that something that's in process?
Right, yeah. I would say it's in process. We haven't got, we haven't got it completely. One of the things we find out every time we have a drill of any sort, we thought, we learned something. And I know today at Green Meadow, we learned that that was a concern, that did we count for every single child's need?
So only is the goal to have a written plan and then to practice the drills?
Depending upon what the need of a student is. We wouldn't have a written plan for every student, but we would have a written plan for students who have, who are going to, who would have a problem with this drill and this procedure.
So who would be responsible for identifying that's the need for the plan, would write the plan, would distribute the plan?
Certainly if a student has, yeah.
Charles?
Yes.
I just wanted to address this because I'm part of the LEPC, which is the Local Emergency Planning Committee. And Chief Sowers, who is now in heading that, actually did, is where we're doing our manual, and that portion is actually included in it. It's part of our plan as well as the safety committee's plan. So he has, we have talked to the special director here, and she has given us a list of students already, not names, but the different disabilities that would possibly we would need to work into our plan, the different levels of what each child might need assistance. So that's not only being looked at at the school level, but also at the whole learning planning process level as well.
So do you have all the sort of protocols and the field chairs or whatever, do we have that planned for?
That's what, for the LEPC, that is exactly what we're doing, with that in conjunction with the safety committee. But we've just started that process within the last couple of weeks.
So it would help the director of special education, in conjunction with the principals, would make sure that we're addressing.
Okay, really glad to hear that because the conversation so far, me about my son and my parents, response.
Okay, well, we, we'll, we'll work on, we'll work on it. Okay. So don't be afraid to get in touch with us to see if we are working on that, okay?
Yeah, coming over here.
I just want to say, I can only speak for, that I've worked with students for nearly six years when I was in high school, and I can say that with the lockdown rules that we do with my student, it was just enough every single time.
Okay, great.
We talked about, so it was always a plan. I mean, it was never, you know, we always said, this is whatever I'm doing, what am I?
Thank you.
I just think it would be good to have somebody present that we can bring on.
Yeah. Why don't you get in touch with us to make sure we're meeting your needs, okay?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
You guys did the drill today at Green Meadow, which you did in the afternoon. What about the kids that are preschool, early, after preschool? They have, my daughter came home and she said, "I'm supposed to have a drill. The guys are going to come shoot me." But she doesn't know. She was waiting for it, but it never happened. She didn't know what to do. Now she's all upset about it.
Okay. Thank you. That's something we definitely do.
The school is tight.
Right, yeah. And they did do a shoot, they did say, dog, I think.
Yeah, she was there. She wasn't, you know.
Folks, thank you. We will.
Well, they also changed the times. So in the different schools, when they've done the drills, and different, different schools are at different levels of drilling. They have changed them, and sometimes they'll change the type of drill too. There might be a, an accessway that's blocked. So just to change it up so that kids learn different strategies.
So it sounds like that's a cohort that we need to focus on over the next time. So thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Sure.
Why is there no blind windows?
Why are there no blinds in the windows?
Because Green Meadows in the woods, by the woods, the guys can just pop up there and just start firing into class from there, not have to go back to come in just from the field.
So I would just, since we won't know that, but Sean or Charles, if you know that insert button, other than that, we're going to move on to the next thing. We can take those things aside.
We'll find out. The police will have to help us with this.
Yeah. In the interest of time, I'll take one more question if there's one more question.
We have a little setup, so.
Yes, go ahead.
I appreciate that you're working on what to do if there is a shooter in the school. Is anybody looking at changes that could be implemented to prevent someone getting into the school, or to like identify concerns before there are big problems, or be proactive to prevent this? Because this, I know by the time you get to this situation, it's kind of too late.
So the gentleman sitting in that row has worked with the police, the facilities directors. We've done actually proactive walkthroughs to make sure that each room is, got the appropriate equipment. Now, is it perfect yet? No, but at least you have a committee that's dedicated to working with the police and fire department to be proactive, and they have been extremely helpful. And we've given them some ideas, and they've given us some ideas. So we are working on the proactive measures as well.
Yeah, just to piggyback off that, that's why the cameras are installed. There's key fobs that have been installed at all exterior doors. Locks have been changed. Cameras are at different angles now. PA systems are at the exterior. So we're working on trying to make sure each, as we said, each time we do a drill, we have much more of what we need to change.
I think one of my biggest concerns is that anybody come in to the school, push the button, they get buzzed in. If the secretary asks them for identification, or at that point becomes concerned about them, they're already inside the school. Like, everyone like, there'd be a way to not.
I can't explain to you exactly what it is, but there is, there is some, a measure set up for that. I can't share too much of the public information.
Yeah. So after Sandy Hook, we had a, actually, the police department, the town administrator, every administrator from the town came and we met, and we did explain that while there are some things like what we're training students and staff to do that we can share with the audience, there are some things that are in place that we don't want to share because if we share it on a public meeting, then the intruder might watch our school meeting and say, "Oh, now I know how to get around that problem." And so there are some things in place that, for security reasons, they have, the police department has to keep those quiet. We can't talk about it. But that scenario, as Sean said, he's aware of what's in place to deal with that, as a staff member.
And I did, I called last question, and I apologize for the hands that I still see in the room, but I do want to indicate a willingness to revisit this just based on community interests. This is, this is far from a finished conversation. Jen, are we ready to rock?
We are close.
We are close, okay.
So I can do a little introduction?
So Jen, before you get started on your introduction, I do want to acknowledge, perhaps one of our summer meetings are our first meeting in the fall. We will revisit this for the members of the community that do have questions that they would like to have answered. I would also like to remind everyone of one of the benefits of a smaller district is your access to your district-level administrators. If you have a question, please feel free to reach out. We'll do our best to get it answered. If you don't like the answer, ask again, or bring something to our attention, please. But I, because we do have outside presenters on board, I do want to be respectful of their time also.
Claudia, can you hear me?
Oops.
Claudia?
Is it plugged in?
Oh, it's got to be plugged in.
Do you have the audio cord plugged in?
I think it is plugged in. It is plugged in. You got it plugged in.
Yes. Claudia, can you hear me?
Actually, it's not Skype. It's Zoom. So it's kind of a new, new app that we're working on. And one of our representatives, LaSalle, is hoping to zoom in.
Okay, first, we have to do our second. So while we're getting this set up and trying to make it happen here, what we wanted to do tonight is, we had scheduled this a couple months ago, and due to conflicts, we needed to postpone it. So it's a career information night. One of the pillars, one of the components of our pillar around global citizenship is that we want students to be college and career-ready. And so we are going to be doing a series of career information nights where we bring in outside speakers and presenters. Claudia, can you hear me? Okay.
We can't hear her.
We need the kids.
We need the kids.
Oh, I think it's coming.
We're just working on being able to hear you, Claudia. For some reason, it's not connected. Oh, you're right here. Do you have any idea why that's not working?
I can try.
Okay, so while we're ready, he's going to try to make a student here. We're going to have a series of speakers come in. We were very fortunate to be part of a great program that LaSalle College is putting together with multiple area districts, Martha's Vineyard, Marlboro, and Boston, some schools in Boston, that works on educator diversity and teacher diversity, trying to provide opportunities for folks to learn about education as a career halfway. We've had several of our students go through a dual enrollment course at LaSalle in education, and we're looking at everything that moving forward with the hope that we have a significant number of students in the future teachers club. And so our hope is that our students would be able to graduate at the end of their time here in Maynard with potentially four undergrad, four undergraduate credits in education, setting them up for success later on. So we're very fortunate to be working with LaSalle.
Yeah, that's all.
Dr. Claudia Rinaldi is here with us, and, what's your name, Barreto, is here as well. And we're going to talk a little bit about education as a career pathway. There are handouts in the back in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, and there also is a handout on the diversity, educator diversity pipeline, which is something that LaSalle is really at the forefront of, trying to make sure that we can provide opportunities for all students to identify with teachers who are like them within the classroom spaces. So Claudia, I can turn it over to you?
Yes, hi, everybody. It's great to see a big group gather there. So thanks for zooming me in tonight.
Great, thank you. So we have the handouts that are out there, and I think we're ready for your presentation.
Okay, so like Jennifer said, I'm going to put some of the information you have there as soon as I can get it up and going. I will share my screen. That way we can all kind of see the same thing. But I'm here to talk a little bit about how to encourage your children to, adolescents, young adults, to think about teaching as a career. Before I begin, I just want to make sure that if there are any questions that are like, really in your minds right now, that you're able to maybe let Jennifer know via paper. That way, we can have them in the front of the room right away, and I can answer those. Does that sound like a good plan? Do you need a couple seconds to do those, draft some questions?
I think we're okay for now. And then if people have questions, you can just sort of raise your hand and let me know, and we'll go from there.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm going to share my screen, and Jennifer, please let me know if you could actually see it well or not.
That looks great.
Okay, so the state has made a new initiative to attract more teachers into the field of education. And particularly, there are two areas that we are in need of developing in terms of teachers in the state. And that is for any kind of teacher. That is in the areas of special education, so mild disabilities mostly. So that would be a teacher who works with children that have learning disabilities or speech and language disabilities or disorders, mild cognitive disabilities, and any of those that are integrated mostly into the regular education class. So these are students that are probably with your children in class right now, and just go out for some time during the day to get support from the special educators. So that is one area. The state is struggling to have enough teachers in that area. And the second area is teachers who are willing and able to work with students who are learning English, okay? So those are, again, teachers who work with students who are either born here but that spoke a different language at home, or students that are coming in from a different country and are now in your district and are in need of being able to access the curriculum that your children are learning with the support of a teacher that we call an English as a Second Language educator. I wanted to just kind of share a little bit of the other challenges that the state is having, and that is that about 90% of teachers are Anglo, and the numbers across the state continues to rise up to anywhere between 30% to 70%, depending on the various districts. So when we look at the difference between the students' race and culture, that is something that the state is now focusing on and working with different organizations, including the Council for State Officers, to think about how to attract diverse learners in high school to think about teaching as a career. And so at LaSalle, we have exactly that number. Right now, 90% of my students are Anglo, and I would say out of that, 96 of them are female. So as you could imagine, gender is also another area that we would like to diversify and support the state in meeting their goals and being present in front of the students in ways that the students can identify with their teachers. So part of what we've done is we've created some kind of information to really attract students who may not really know what a teaching career is. I know I have two sons. One is a ninth grader and one is a middle schooler, and the first thing that comes out of their mouth is that they don't want to be a teacher. So one of the things we want to do is be able to share with the ones that have a little interest what it's like. So they, the one in these myths that we identified here have a focus on minority students who may be interested in going into teaching. And then some others are, you know, it doesn't matter race or culture, they're myths that we have in education. So, you know, for example, if you look at the second one that says that teachers don't make any money, of course, we know that a starting salary in Massachusetts for a teacher is about $45,000, give and take, the different districts. And an average teacher, for example, in a large urban district, 15 years into the profession is making about between $80,000 and $90,000. That is the picture in Massachusetts. Obviously, in Florida, it's different, and in Texas, it's different, but cost of living is also different. So, you know, generally speaking, we're in a state where education is paid fairly well and comparable as they leave college in their first year. They also talk about, well, I don't want to be a teacher my whole life, thinking that teachers can get promoted. And so that's another thing that we like to put a little seed in their minds to think about, is that you could be a teacher for a few years and then become a teacher leader, a professional development trainer, a principal, a professor, a coach, a psychologist, a counselor, but you need a bachelor's to do any of those. So what we want to do is bring them in, prepare them to work with students, and then help them to jump off board to another area of education that we really need as well. You know, teaching is a tough but rewarding career, and so we like to talk to them about, you know, the idea of social justice and meeting the needs of kids who really need you as one of the benefits of the career. Innovation is something that, again, we only think about what we're familiar with, but there's a lot of innovation happening in education, and particularly in our state of Massachusetts. So we get to share a little bit about different companies and charters and different applications of educational programs that are in the state so that they're able to see themselves in a variety of jobs, whether it's in a classroom or outside of a classroom. And of course, you know, the reason that we're all in education here, your principals and your district administrators and your teachers, is because we like to get those former students to come back to us and tell us how they changed our lives. What I wanted to do now was kind of get to some of the content that we share with the students in terms of how to get to college. Are there any questions right now? Jen, can you ask? I don't, I don't see the people very well. I just kind of see the big room. So I don't know if there's any questions so far.
Is there a hand in the back? I'm not seeing. I think we're good. I think we're good. Is there a question? I think we're good.
Sorry, did you say something?
I think we're all set.
You're all set, okay. So part of what we also work in this grant was we bring students onto campuses to kind of help them think about how you're successful in college. And so here are four areas that we really identified with our current students that will make your child successful in college. And it's really interesting, some students come with these skills and some don't. And so sometimes I find myself teaching our students, you know, to, you know, email the teacher, the professor, if you're gonna be absent from class before and not after. It seems like simple things, but there are some areas that we find that students don't come well prepared to kind of interact in the college world. And so we wanna give the students in the grant a little bit of a heads up. So thinking about, you know, on-campus supports, building relationships with your professors and your faculty, working with your classmates, and looking to see how you could get into as many schools out in different districts so that you know what kind of school you want as you become a teacher. So I'll give you a minute to read those sections in that handout that you have in front of you that is up on the screen again, and see if there's one that maybe there is a question about. So I'm gonna give you about 20 seconds to kind of just share one with the person next to you or just take a few minutes to read. Go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Rinaldi, this is Dr. Girardi. And Jennifer's getting a few more copies. Most of the people have some copies, but we're getting more copies made, so everybody has a copy.
I can make it bigger on the screen as well if you all want to read off the screen a little bit.
It's just too bright.
It's too bright?
It's too bright, so you can't really read it.
It's hard to read the blue font. The blue font's difficult to read.
Okay, so let me just review a couple for those of you who don't have it. So some of the kind of recommendations we give them, we give the students is to look for a mentor right away when you get to college. And a mentor could be somebody in student life or a faculty member that they really find interesting in their first classes that they take. A mentor goes a really long way to maintaining your child in college and making them successful. And it engages them in all sorts of opportunities that you wouldn't otherwise have if you don't engage with the faculty members in the campus. Some of those things would be research opportunities, additional scholarships, grants like this one. You also get the benefit of going to office hours and talking about the content and really getting some additional kind of understanding and support if you do have that mentor faculty member. And, you know, one of the reasons why we're faculty members is because we love that. So definitely encourage them to pick a faculty member that they can really be close to or if they're living on campus and they prefer somebody in student life, that they do that. Another recommendation that I find I talk a lot about is to look for work-study jobs on campus. So we have some students who wanna work off-campus and live off-campus and some that just wanna get a job and don't know that they can look for jobs on campus. So I think it's important for parents to know that you can tell your child, you know, your young adult, to go into the work-study office and see what kind of jobs there are open. And to talk to that mentor or professors to see if there's any work-study that is available through the individual departments. Again, that keeps them on campus, it keeps them collaborating and interacting with their peers, with the faculty members, engaged with the topic of study that they're doing. And so they tend to have much better experiences than students that work outside of campus and only come in for classes. Let's see, let me move down a little bit to those. You know, if we look at teaching in particular, one of the things that you want to look at as they select a program in education or teacher preparation is that you're out in school since your first year. At LaSalle, we send our freshmen out to work in after-school programs so that they can really see early on and not lose a lot of time with changing majors, whether they actually like to work with students or with children or it was more the idea that they would wanna be teachers and now that they actually spent time on the other side of being a student but now being either a coach or a teacher or a mentor or tutor, maybe they find they don't like it. So we wanna get them out and about with children in the first year. And then every subsequent year, we also like to prepare them by sending them to urban and suburban schools. So we have school districts like your own in Maynard, Marlboro, Newton, Waltham, but we also have Boston that we send our students in teacher preparation. And although I can't select the students, the schools that we send them, it is important for them to see the differences and to also for them to experience some classes that may be more challenging than others. Plus also see how teachers work differently across urban and suburban schools. The other reason for that is because most jobs will be available in your urban setting, in your urban school districts at much higher rates than they will be in districts like Maynard where, you know, they probably don't have that many openings in the first year. And if they do, they probably have more applicants than they would in a Boston Public Schools or Lawrence or something of that sort. So they get to navigate it with support. We send them in groups and now suddenly they're not really scared of going into Boston or going into Lawrence. They're used to kind of what those schools look like and what they have to do and quickly realize that it's just like any other school. And then the last part that we focus for them is getting them to create a portfolio or a product that they could take to an interview or attend at a career fair, you know, that shows who they are and helps them to stand out. So if you can imagine, the thousands of graduates that are coming out of college this year, just like the thousands of high school students that just graduated or about to graduate, we want them to be able to get selected for a job because their unique experiences. So part of that college experience and a mentoring program is kind of getting that mentor to help you create unique experience that you could talk about, like participation in conferences that you went to or presented or attended, work in research projects or grants, and then also be able to show what you're doing in teaching. So one example of this is something that about seven institutions in the state of Massachusetts have right now, which is teach live simulation software. And so about seven of us are using a simulator, a simulation classroom, where the students can pre-teach a lesson to avatars, to fake children, and interact with them and try out lessons before they go out and do it with real students in schools. So again, videotape that, have that as part of your experience and then go out to schools and videotape your best lessons and be able to show somebody who's interviewing what you can actually do, not just write what you can do. So there's evidence that you are a teacher that is prepared to go out and have your own classroom. And then, of course, helping to kind of create their resumes to be ready to go out and get those jobs in education that they've been waiting for. So why don't you take just a minute and share with each other something that was interesting to you with a person next to you while I get other information forward? And if there's any question, if you could raise your hand and Jen will, or Edna could go ahead and get some of those questions.
Dr. Rinaldi, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Can you hear me, Dr.?
You don't have one?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
Okay.
And you mentioned how even suburban districts might not have as much need for a diverse workforce, but that's something we struggle with. So that's one of the reasons why we really appreciate working with LaSalle, so that hopefully you'll homegrown some of our students of diversity to get a degree and then teach in Maynard. So that's our hope and we really appreciate the fact that you wrote this grant for all of the communities, including Maynard, and that we're gonna cultivate students from within the community to work in the community. So I just wanted to thank you about that. That's my comment on what you just shared with us.
Great, great. That's wonderful. We just, LaSalle just received a grant for a very significant amount of money to support students coming in through this grant who are going into education. They don't have to be minority, but they do have to be participating in the grant activities and interested in working with minority students. And so it's great to know that they will be finding students in your district that we can encourage to think further. I know we worked with some of the juniors this year and we're hoping that, like everything in the world, it's word of mouth and we could get more information out to more students later on and they will want to think about the project and come to LaSalle. And, you know, thanks to the collaboration you have with Du enrollment in partnership with us that we're able to offer more of those courses for students to come in even better prepared.
Any other questions? Okay, it doesn't look like we have any other questions. Doesn't look like we have any other questions, Dr. Rinaldi. Are there other pieces of information you would like to share with us?
So Edna speaks Spanish and so I didn't know if there were any Spanish-speaking parents. I want something translated. I do as well, but maybe she could take them on the side and answer any particular questions you may have. We do have handouts of the kind of work and recommendations that we have for parents. And that's just one more thing that I'm gonna show. Okay, Jen, we have time?
Say again, sorry?
Do we have time to share just a couple more slides?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I wanted to share a little bit about, and these handouts are there as well for you, but I wanted to share with you a little bit about some of the resources that as parents you could link on to find out more information. We talked to the students about this as well, but I just want you to know that there are these great websites out there to help you navigate the application process to apply for the different colleges and to complete the financial packages. So if you look at the PDF printed version that has these slides, you could look at the different links that are there. We're in the process of creating a website that would have this, so I will be sending the link and if you leave your email with the district, I'm sure they'll be happy to pass it on. And then we help the students think about how to complete this process. But I have created at the end of these topics that are more relevant to parents, such as should my son or daughter get a job outside of college? And so it gives you some information and then some additional resources that are available in multiple languages. One in particular that I like to make our English-speaking parents and Spanish-speaking parents aware of is a website called understood.org. And Understood is a website that has been creating many, many resources for parents for helping children that have learning and attention issues. And because of that, they have a whole section on applying to college and how to help them stay in college. So if you are interested in those resources, I'm gonna just kind of bring you here and show you that. Give me one second. So if you arrive to their website, you will see that everything and all the content is in English and Spanish. This is a foundation, 11 foundations came together to provide this resource for families and provide recommendations and easy-to-take tools with you. So if you search college, you will now get many things, many resources that could be helpful as you start the process of applying to college. And if you have a child who, like I do, who's been struggling through high school, then it could give you some really great ideas on how to make that transition easier for you and for them. So there's things such as Planning for College, A Four-Year Guide, 12 Tips for Parenting Kids with ADHD for Life with College Roommates. It also helps them, you know, you can continue going on different topics, Pros and Cons of Disclosing Learning and Attention Issues, Choosing a College, How Do You Choose From a Small College to a Large College, and different videos and readings that could help to kind of inform the process of the college application. The information I'm sharing is more from a faculty member's perspective. I run our Department of Education, so I'm not an admissions person. So just keep that in mind. And of course, my goal is to encourage as many students to go into the teaching field as we can and to go into education in general. It doesn't have to be in a classroom. It certainly is, education is going leaps and bounds in innovation. Today, I was actually in a conference where they're developing more simulation and they need teachers to be able to kind of help create those, people who are interested in STEM, but also how children learn. And so, you know, when you think about an education career is just more than just becoming a teacher, it could be a teacher or beyond, depending on what students are interested in.
All right, well, thank you so much, Dr. Rinaldi. We appreciate it. I guess we'll pause at this point for any other last call for questions, if any folks have them.
My apologies if I missed it, but when is this starting?
And I may be able to answer other questions that are education-related, but I can promise, but you can ask and I could definitely get you an answer from our admissions office if you're curious about any topic really that comes. I could also talk a little bit about, I've worked in a large campus of 10,000 students versus a small campus like LaSalle that has 1,800 students and tell you what that is like for students. From my perception, Edna was a student in our undergraduate and graduate program as well, so she could share a little bit as well. I don't know if that is something of interest to any of them.
Do you wanna share your perspective? We'd be happy to hear, it'd be lovely to hear from you.
Well, it was definitely, I felt like it was more, it was easier for me to connect to the faculty. And every time I encounter a problem, whether with my classes or any of the admission situation or, you know, any kind of those situations where you are, as a student, you can get frustrated with, being on a small campus like LaSalle allowed me to be more relatable with my teachers, the staff, the faculty, knowing that like the chair of the department knows me by name and she pretty much makes the decisions of whether or not I can do this or that. It's definitely helpful. I feel like being able to be in a class of 20 students allowed me more concentration of, and being able to like, I didn't get this, can you just go back and just explain it again? Because I didn't get it. And knowing that the teachers were not just expecting me to know it and just to do well in my exams just because, but they were always trying to help me, you know, in pursuit of grades. That's our slogan at LaSalle, so that was that, that's what they do. To give you an idea, I'm an international student. So as an international student, to go into grad school, I have to have a full-time load of credits, which is 12 credits a semester. But at that point in time, when I was interested in pursuing my masters, LaSalle didn't have that. They had only nine credits as a full credit for grad students. And I already had enrolled and I already had done the fifth-year program, which is something that the Ed Department also has, that if you're an undergrad student and you want to continue and become a grad student, do a masters, you do one more year taking classes on your senior year of your undergrad of master level. And that tells you that in the fifth year of your program, you already finished with a masters. So it doesn't take you two or three extra years. So I took advantage of that and I talked to the chair of the department and the director of the grad school. And they were like, yeah, you can take these classes. And then after I had taken my first two classes and I was just going for my grad classes, I got a call from admissions and they said, we can't take you. You have to leave. And I was like, but... Why do I have to leave? I already took two classes. What are you talking about? They're like, well, you know, the grad program only allows nine credits, this and that. Who helped you get into these classes? And I'm like, the chair of the department. And they're like, well, we'll talk to the chair of the department. It seems like you're informed about your stuff. I'm like, yes. So it was a matter of one day, they called Professor Rinaldi and she was like, yeah. And it was interesting to see that she was like, why didn't we open this before to more students that want to come in? Not only to international students that have the regulation of... the regulation of the 12 credits, but to our our students that would like to finish their program faster because they can add that extra three credits to their load if they're able to do it. So thanks to that, it shows how LaSalle is really trying to make things work. And the next day, Professor Rinaldi sent me a call and she's like, you're all set, just go and enroll. And I was like, thank you.
I'd like to add, the four plus one program is especially good for educators because in Massachusetts, the regulations are that you have to get a master's degree within five years of employment. This way you're getting that taken care of in advance. So it's really the wonderful program that that they offer for our for the students.
And another thing that I would like to add about the the part of the education program at LaSalle, even when you begin, when you're a freshman, on your first semester, you go into the field. Some schools don't allow you to do that until you're a senior. So if you become a student for the Ed Department and the first semester, you take the class of ED109, which is like teaching, and you you're starting to see if you're actually going to be able to be a teacher. Because sometimes it happens to all of us when we start something and you go in, yeah, I want to be a teacher. And then you take the first class and you're like, yeah, no, I don't want to do this anymore. But you don't have the real experience until the end of your of your probably your career. Then you're like, I spent three years of my life studying this. Now I'm going to the field and I realize this is not for me.
And we very much appreciate the partnership with LaSalle. They have been a leader in online learning for their undergraduate and graduate students. And we were fortunate enough to have a relationship with them with a former colleague and so we've been able to create the dual enrollment programming and super excited to expand that dual enrollment programming to provide the opportunities for education. I can't echo enough the idea of getting into the classrooms early. Far too many programs allow folks to go through the coursework and then get into classrooms later on. And again, we have a significant number of students in Maynard who are already in the Future Teachers Club or program who are working within our schools and our students. I saw one senior project presentation from one of those students who very much is excited about this, the field of education and wanting to go in to make a difference as all of our teachers do. So, Dr. Rinaldi, Edna, thank you so much for your time tonight and we look forward to a continued relationship with LaSalle through the Epic Program, but then also through our dual enrollments as well. And so again, thank you for hosting our our first career information night. We appreciate it.
And thank you, and I hope as the juniors and the grant participation going to senior year that we could be awarding them some of the scholarships next year. So I'm very excited about that.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you so much.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Jen, I'll give you just a moment.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, so taking the next item on the agenda, my chairperson's report. Just a quick update for those of you who don't follow the town meeting process. A couple of notable things related to the schools occurred on Monday night. First of all, the town budget passed, one of the line items of which being our school funding. So anybody who's been following the process has been aware of the budget process throughout the year. I believe we started the budget in late September this year. We did have some unfortunate reductions. However, I did have an encouraging conversation with Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Krista Silva, informally, and he has indicated that there may be some additional funding coming down the pipe and a willingness to make sure that the BOS and the town does everything in their power to try and close that budget deficit even further. So I thought that that was very encouraging. He's optimistic and seeing as how the pipeline of money comes from the feds, the Commonwealth to the town and then is dispersed to us, the fact that the town side is indicating a willingness to work on the problem with us is incredibly encouraging. Second, there were two separate warrant articles that impacted school facilities, namely the Fowler Fields Project, which was being championed by the Friends of Maynard Soccer. Those two warrant articles were funded in full and combined with citizen fundraising and some involvement from the school itself, it looks like we are going to be able to fully renovate and provide irrigation for the athletic complex behind the Fowler Building, which any of us who have children in youth soccer understand is a dire, dire need. So that was incredibly encouraging coming out of town meeting on Monday night. Also, our seniors talked about their senior projects, so they stole my thunder on that. Friendly reminder that graduation's coming up in about a week and a half. If you have children that are graduating, please accept my heartfelt congratulations. Getting a child through 13 years of formal schooling and across the stage on graduation day is no small feat. As a public high school educator, I'm aware of that from a different perspective. My children are a long way away from that. And I believe that's about all I have for my superintendent's report. So Dr. Girardi, why don't you go ahead and launch into your superintendent's report?
Excellent, thank you. Yesterday, we had a presentation for the Fowler students called Dealing with Social Media. And it was done by Dr. Richard DiCapua, who is a Maynard parent, resident, and the Associate Dean of Students at Boston College. He already has met with staff members also to work in Fowler to work on these issues regarding the use of social media. So he's done some PD, then he worked with our students, which is what we try to do. We try to bring this information in for teachers and students so everybody's aware of the same vocabulary about how we deal with these sort of things. Dr. DiCapua has extensive experience in dealing with students with problems that can arise with the use of misuse of social media, including bullying, sexting, and other risky behaviors. His experience at the college level with students was intriguing to our students. They actually really were like, you know, they paid attention, they were stunned. And you know, he said, certainly if if these college kids are having problems with this, you must be having problems with this too. It just resonated with kids. It made sense that everybody's having problems with social media. So you know, his approach was very upbeat and his insights were very helpful. And this is just part of that ongoing work that we keep reporting at the school committee level on bullying and sexting and all of the risky behaviors that we're working, the teachers and the administration are working together to try and reduce the risky behaviors. So I wanted to report that. I was very excited and he was very impressive. And it's another community collaboration. Isn't it wonderful when we have experts who live in the community? The next, my my final report is that I'd like to introduce our new Principal of Leadership and Operations for the Fowler School, Mr. Dan Costello is here. And he's sitting right in front, thank you. Before I share a brief biography, I'd just like to add that although we had many talented people who applied, Dan was the best person for the job. I'm confident of that. Dan has been a professional educator for 25 years. He's taught high school history for five years, then he became an Assistant Principal at wholly named junior senior high school in Worcester. He was promoted to Principal of St. Bernard's High School in Fitchburg. He then went on to become the Principal of the Middle Schools in Gardner and Shrewsbury. Dan worked in the private sector, private education sector as well. He spent seven years working for Scholastic and Amplify. He was a very successful consultant, trainer, and project manager manager with Amplify. He led two large statewide engagements, one in Rhode Island and one in Mississippi, helping schools learn how to use data to improve instruction and integrate technology into the classroom. And those are two major initiatives that we've been working on for quite some time as well. Dan spent the last year at West Broadway Middle School as a sixth grade teacher and an interim principal. He's lived in Maynard for four years with his wife Carrie and his stepdaughter Brenna, who's a sixth grader at Fowler. He's served on the Maynard Finance Committee and currently sits on the Fire Station Building Committee. So I'm really excited to have, again, such quality Maynard residents supporting our students. I think that's so important and that's a major qualification. I see that as, you know, the dedication to the community as being a very important thing. So I wanted to introduce him to the community. We had opportunities to introduce him to the staff. It has been a quick turnover because we need the support right away and so that's why it's such a quick turnover, but I did want to introduce him tonight for the community.
Excellent. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Dan. Is that it for your superintendent's report?
That is the end of my superintendent's report.
Okay, let's go into citizens' comments. For citizens' comments, please come up to the front of the room, introduce yourself and friendly reminder, comment on or discuss anything that's on the agenda or make a recommendation for a future agenda item. So floor's open.
You get to be first.
You do get to be first.
My name is Jessica Tool. I have three kids, Green Meadow and Fowler. I had a question, I'm confused about some of the staffing and budget going on, particularly at Green Meadow. Last I heard that we were cutting the instructional coaches, the math coach and, thank you, and possibly Title I coach, is that still true?
The cuts that were made to the budget have been made and are still consistent from the, what, two meetings ago when we balanced the budget?
Okay. And then, so I guess I'm confused because when I was looking at the job postings, it looks like we have a full-time position posted for a wellness teacher and a computer science teacher at Green Meadow. And then, so I'm just trying to make sense of it because I don't know, it seems like we have part-time specials still and the kids are still going to library every other week. So I'm just, I'm wondering why.
I can explain a little bit, maybe Jen can help me too, but I'll start in that when we passed the budget, we were aware that we were in the middle of contract negotiations. And in the contract negotiations, we were aware that there were going to be staffing implications. So when the when the MOU for the contract was awarded, I believe the union talked about how there are a lot of wonderful things in the contract and we all talked about that as well, where teachers are going to have more collaborative time and there are going to be more opportunities for students. In order to do that, we're going to have to hire some staff. So that was taken into account as part of the budgeting that we were going to have to hire some staff as a result of the pending contract, which eventually did get an MOU. It's going to do some improvements at the at the Green Meadow School. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough funding to keep all of the programs and so we had to make other tough decisions, which is why some things were cut, some things were improved. And as far as the specialists, at this point, we're still working on the schedules so that they can know how much their position has gone up, whether it's gone up to full-time or maybe gone up partially up, because some are working at a .5, some at a .8. And so we're working on the schedules to figure that out and it's almost done. I don't know if you want to share that?
And so we will, we are working on schedules at Fowler and the high school schedule is essentially finished, but schedules at Fowler and Green Meadow due to shared staffing. And so once we have that finalized, we'll be sending information out to both Green Meadow and Fowler families about what specials will look like. But I can tell you for sure that all students will have all of their specials every week. That was an improvement that we were able to make due to the contract negotiations and some changes that we made there. So all of those, all of the students will have all of the specials every week. There will be additional specials that are added to the rotation and we're very excited about the opportunities that we're going to be able to provide for all of our students from that.
So is the wellness teacher, is that considered like a wellness class as a special or?
Yes. Yep, so it's, we have two different layers of specials and this will be part of the information. There'll be 45-minute specials, which are, I'm saying that.
I think if you're not ready to like to point by point, then I think an email's in the parents, you know, it's made. I'm just saying, like, don't, you know, don't feel like you have to remember it off the top of your head, but I think that knowing that it's coming and this is very typical this time of year.
Yep.
But it's true. I mean, parents are obviously curious.
Absolutely.
And I think once you have it and once you know, you know, the staffing across the buildings, I know adds complexity.
It does.
And we're just finalizing things.
And we can speak in generalities and say that the specials offering to Green Meadow will be expanded.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Ken Askbrook. So could you explain sort of who are going to be the administrators at the different schools and how they're going to be, what their responsibilities at the individual schools are going to be and then how that sort of spreads across the three schools as a, as sort of a system?
Well, so it's probably best because this recent hire was focused on where we were limited, which was the Fowler and the Green Meadow. At the Fowler and Green Meadow, we had tried a new model of administration and that was to have a Principal of Leadership and Operations in each building and a Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment across both buildings. That was less staffing than we've ever had in those two buildings. That's what we implemented this year. The reason why we implemented that was because having a Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, it helps with the, we, when we negotiated our contract three years ago or four years ago, we negotiated a new evaluation system that the state was proposing, but it really focused on dialogue and communication and support. And so we wanted to make sure that the administrators who are doing that could have focus on curriculum instruction and assessment and not all the other things that leadership and operations takes up because really putting out the fires during the course of the day is a major part of a principal's job. The reality is that oftentimes the cafeteria is, you know, is down one staff member and the principal has to go figure out something to help out. Or, you know, there's an AP test and the room isn't set up properly or that screen that you're looking at was behind a door behind the AP room and you can't interrupt the AP room to get it ready for the school committee. These are the typical fires that happen during the middle of the day that a principal has to deal with. Now, what happened though was in addition to that, we have regular school discipline, we have other things that principals are responsible for as well. And so we believed and we presented to the school committee that we were understaffed this year. So now what we are going to do is we're going to have a Principal of Leadership and Operations and a Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment in each of the two buildings. So that way we will be able to fully staff administratively the way it always has been with two administrators in each building and that will also help us to to get the work done that needs to be done because we were understaffed.
So who are those individuals going to be?
So right now, Mary Beth Shea is the is the Principal of Leadership and Operations at the Green Meadow. Donna Dankner has been splitting Curriculum of, Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment between Green Meadow and Fowler, so she will go back to the Green Meadow because she's most familiar with that building. We just hired Mr. Costello to be the Principal of Leadership and Operations. And right now Sharon is the Sharon Saylor, Sharon Fowler, Sharon Saylor is the Principal of Leadership and Operations this year and we feel for the rest of the year, I had shared with the school committee at the last meeting, that there's a real need in that, in this building this year. It's just been, sometimes you have years that are rough and this has been a rough year. And at the last school committee meeting, I reported that we had some students who were so upset about their cell phones being taken away that they were trying to break into the main office and we had to call the police. Just today, Mr. Perrin, who's the art teacher, came in to find that some students had damaged clay projects that cannot be rebuilt for a senior project for a student. So when you're having vandalism, when you're having students who are that connected to their social media and their cell phones and having problems, we feel like for the rest of the year, the two of them are going to be Principals of Leadership and Operations because Principal Dankner is taking care of the evaluations of Fowler for the rest of the year to try and get it, and there's an endpoint for that. And then Principal Saylor will be the Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment and Principal, Costello will be the Principal of Leadership and Operations.
If I could just, if I could just add, Ken, and we talked about this extensively in our last meeting, you know, I think when we had one of the budget cuts and we had to cut and there was a huge cry, I'm not sure why, I think we don't understand all the work everyone does, to cut administration. So for whatever reason, that was the way we went that year. It took us down to 1.5 people per building. So I'm not going to, I personally don't get hung up on titles, you know, as long as everyone's doing what we need done to help the kids, I'm happy. So now we're basically, we're coming back with two full-time administrators in both buildings. And I just wanted to take the chance, I see that Mrs. Saylor is here, just to publicly thank you because I know it's been a very rough year not having two full-time administrators. So I just want you to know, I don't see this at all as any sort of reflection on you. I think that your staff has been vocal that we have needed another administrator in that building. So I just want you to know that we appreciate all the hard work we did this year. 1.5 doesn't cut it with 500 kids. It doesn't cut it at the Green Meadow, it doesn't cut it at the Fowler. That's not how it works, you know? So we tried it, we had a tough budget that year, we made our cuts and I wish we had never done it, but we get cuts requested every year for us to make. So I just want to thank you since you're here tonight. Anyone else?
Next, Sullivan, and I'm here representing the Maynard Education Association, the teachers, particularly the Fowler teachers. And in the past two weeks, there's been a lot of confusion and upset by the teachers at Fowler in that this right now, what we just heard from Dr. Girardi, is probably the most information that we've heard about the situation with the principals than we've heard in the past two weeks. And I know at the previous school committee meeting that you agreed is probably the most information that we've heard about the situation with the principals than we've heard in the past two weeks. And I know at the previous school committee meeting that you agreed to hire another administrator at Fowler. However, the first information where that came out to the staff was Monday's email to the staff announcing Dan Costello as the new principal of leadership and operations. And at that point, we still had no idea when he was starting. We had no idea how long he was going to be there. And we had no idea, to be honest, where he came from. There was a lack of transparency and a lack of communication. There were not teachers involved in a search committee. There were no teachers who were invited to be a part of any committee to review applications, to interview staff or interview applicants. And it just felt like everything was done behind closed doors. And, and I feel for, for you, for Dan Costello because the teachers were then left to do their own research about a candidate and searching the internet and relying on second and third-hand stories that we hear from community members. And from them, we have to make just our own determination because we did not get an opportunity to talk to anybody about what their philosophy was, what their educational experience was. And we're talking about the principal of leadership and operations of the school. So if there was a principal who is most involved in the teachers' day-to-day lives, that's who it is. And we wouldn't have been able to pick him out of a crowd if he had buzzed in on the beginning of the, of the first day on Tuesday. We would have been able to pick him out. And it was more frustrating where we didn't have anyone that we felt like was giving us any information unless we asked for it. And so even on Monday, when we got Mr. Costello's bio, which you had shared again, we still had no idea when he was starting and what it was going to be like. And we had no idea that he was going to be there for the full year. And so it's just very hard for teachers to come to school every day and find leadership in someone who we didn't feel like we were involved in the process at all. We didn't feel like the teachers had input into that. And so we've talked a lot about communication. I know that there's a communication task force, but this felt like a failure. This felt like something that was done behind closed doors. And it's hard for us to trust that there's not something shady going on. And like, I mean, it's, it's hard for us to trust that that's the case.
Meg, I would like to point out to you that a full week ago, last, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday, that you and I met. And I explained to you that there was the school, because you hadn't been at the last school committee meeting. So I explained to you that the school committee felt the urgency from the teachers that they talked to and from the parents that they talked to, to make this a quick decision. And I told you the process. So if you didn't relay it to your staff from last Thursday.
It's all our fault. Of course it's all our fault. It's never your fault. I, I am in charge of my teachers and representing them, the union. It is not my job to communicate the decisions of the school committee about their leadership for principals. I, it wasn't my job to come in and announce the principles of, to my staff. It's not, that wasn't my position to do that. And so I, I take offense that things that you share with me offhand in a hallway, that I should assume that those are things that is my responsibility to email out to my staff or to my teachers.
And I take offense that when I had you in my office and we're having an official conversation as union president, that you did not relay that to your staff, that this was going to be on a fast track. So we were in my office, not offhanded, and we had a conversation about this.
I emailed you when I saw the posting that said that the applications were due on May 17th. So I noticed that posting on May 16th and I emailed you asking, what is the process if there are going to be a search committee? And you replied the next day on May 17th, saying that you had a few minutes to speak with me before you're heading to another meeting. And at that point, I was not able to catch you at that meeting. You then, that was on Thursday. And then on Friday morning, you had emailed me and said, do you want to discuss this position, I believe? And at 10 o'clock on Friday morning, I had come into your office and you had said, I interviewed last night. I have two candidates. And you just told me some names. So, all right.
By law.
So I'm not saying anything illegal, but I'm saying that it feels as though that there's something that.
So you're hearing you. And I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
We're not arguing that.
All right. So what?
Shady.
All right. Tony Jane Gomes, and in the transparency communication, is this going to be sent out to the, to the community so that we're all aware of who's doing what and what the responsibilities are?
It absolutely is.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Marv Hooken. I, just piggybacking off of what Meg said, I just wanted to let you know that the parents also are feeling this kind of untrustworthiness. Not everybody feels that way, but there is a large, a large portion that are feeling like because there was no search committee, like has been happening, like happened when Sharon was hired or when Mary Beth was hired, that there was not enough communication. So it would be, would have been helpful and still, it would still be helpful to kind of let people know what you had already expressed, the different positions and how that all works. Just to let all the community know what's kind of happening.
And I think that's a very fair comment. And I think that I very much appreciate you bringing it up very respectfully because I think you've been to enough meetings over the years that you know that everyone here is trying only to do what's best for the kids. Hopefully that's what's best for the staff. We all agreed all year, we needed another body in that building. And if it moved fast and if the communication wasn't perfect, we completely own that. And it's a learning experience, but it is, and this isn't directed to you. It's not the end of the world. And I hope we're raising our kids to be a little more resilient than this. But I appreciate it. You know, I didn't want to cut you off, but thank you for being respectful. It's very appreciated and we try to return that. Mrs. Mancini?
Hello. So just wondering, no disrespect to Mr. Costello, but was he hired in an interim position so that over the summer, you'll do what's traditional and do a search and find out if he still remains to be the best candidate? Or is this, I heard that there's a three-year contract. Like, is this a done deal? Or was he there to stop the bleeding, which I appreciate because I'm living through Fowler this year? But just wondering, is this to help Sharon through the rest of the school year? And then will you do a proper search and find out if this is still how we're going to go forward?
So in order to get the three candidates that were able to start immediately, I had to offer a one-year contract. So it's a one-year contract. So it's the rest of the year and one full school year, not a three years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Simmons, I'm just wondering about the budget. Is it the last school committee meeting? The, the school budget committee meeting with all the cuts? I'm just wondering where the funding for this position came from and how that will affect the budget and whether there will be more cuts?
So we planned for next year's budget. When the town says to us, and this is what they do. They send us a letter in November and they say, please submit a level services budget. And when we plan for the following year, I forget what FY is next year. Whatever the next FY is, we planned to have two administrators back in all buildings. So the town may say to us, give us your level services budget, but we actually have our own thoughts on what that means. And people will say, rightly so, that we never bring anything back. But we firmly believe in bringing this back, like we're bringing back the Green Meadow specials. So we're trying to chip away at the cuts. So it's planned for next year. And then in order, in order to deal with the urgency with the vaping and everything else that's going on at Fowler right now, Michelle found money in the substitute line because we haven't had to use as many substitutes as we budget for. So substitutes go up and down based on how many times people are out and how many times we fill a substitute. So it's actually, it's really, I understand that this doesn't seem transparent, but like, it's pretty black and white.
Well, I'm, I.
No, no. So I appreciate you bringing it up. I appreciate you bringing it up because I understand it's so secretive. But, you know, this is what we did this year. We raised fees so we can keep middle school sports going. We plan to bring the administrators back in the next FY budget that starts in September. And we had money to do it now versus keep going through this, this year that has been Fowler's, which has been very hard on the staff, especially the seventh and eighth grade, and very hard on the parents. So really, I don't remember if you were at the last meeting, but the urgency that we have been hearing about. No, no, no. Just letting you know, like, there's been so much urgency directed, and I think rightly so, that all we're trying to do is help. I know it's, you know, people can have conspiracy theories and I get that. But anyone who's at our meetings, and I see plenty of people here that come to every meeting, they know that we're just parents.
Yeah, I, I, that wasn't my part at all. I was really just wondering about the budget and a follow-up to that.
I'm a rambler, so you cut me off.
Well, so I'm cutting you off. So as a follow-up to that, going back to the last budget committee meeting, so that, this is my own selfish needs, working at the high school. We had a full-time guidance counselor on the campus. That position was restored, but we found out at the high school that that position's going to be split between the high school and the middle school. I was very concerned about that because, as you know, we just started the new Oasis program at the high school, which is phenomenal. And I've heard great things and it's going really well. But the fact is, if we are at a point with mental health issues at the high school that we need a sub-separate program, how can we get rid of half a guidance counselor? And while adding, so my question with this is if we're adding a full-time administrator to help with issues at Fowler, can we keep our full-time guidance counselor at the high school?
I know that my.
Our guidance counselors are so stretched. I've had a senior every year and I have another senior next year. And I know, if you've worked closely with my senior this year, Dana McPhee has been instrumental in getting us through that application process. And she was last year with my senior last year, and I want her to be next year. And I know she won't be able to be if she's only half-time here.
I don't want to speak for the school committee, just because we're obviously all not here, but I know that that is something that we firmly believe in. So when Justin is speaking with the head of the board of selectmen, still trying to get more money for us, I believe that that is our top choice to restore.
I'm not even talking about money though. If, if you've already added an administrator, why take something away from the high school? We're already running on 1.5 administrators. We've had that at the high school for several years. Kevin Caruso with Non-Full-Time Vice Principal is also the athletic director.
Jen, do you have anything you want to add to that? Or is that, you're, you are much more in tune with where the staff is being allocated? So I don't want to miss you.
Sure. All I can, all I can state is a couple, we're in plans, we've, with processes and such. And all I can say is that we're working with the guidance staff across the district to better align resources and job responsibilities so that people aren't feeling as stretched as they are. I've had multiple conversations in the three years that I've been here at Green Meadow indicating that they need more guidance staff, at Fowler indicating that they need more guidance staff. The high school hasn't had that conversation because they have the three positions in terms of that. And we were going to move a position last year, this, this current year, back to Fowler with the eighth grade moving back. And so this was always, again, in the plans of doing that work. And I think when, you know, sort of reality hits the road, it, it becomes, okay, how are we going to make this work? So I don't have any, any answers right now for you. All I can tell you is that I am working closely with the guidance staff on how we make sure that our connections between the buildings are sound and successful and that there is a vertical alignment between the guidance staff so that we can support our students all the way through our programming and not just sort of building to building. One of the issues and the things that we've seen is that students have had a significant amount of challenge with transitions in our district. And so this was one of the places where we could utilize resources to do that. With the addition of the principals in every building, what that will do is free up some time of the guidance counselors who are doing, certain things that the guidance counselors are doing. That will be the work of either the curriculum instruction and assessment principal or the leadership and operations. So that will free up some of the, you know, some of the administrative stuff going to the guidance coun, or going away from the guidance counselors so that they can do more work with the students. But what those specific tasks are, I'm working with the administration and the guidance counselors to identify those. We certainly hear the need. I certainly understand the work that our guidance counselors do across the district. Had multiple conversations with community members, particularly in the wake of the tragedies that we've seen about the need for increased guidance. What I said to one community member, you know, earlier this week is that we need to focus on our guidance staff, but we also need to make sure that students have multiple adults with whom they connect with in the building who can do this kind of work. And the high school staff has done an incredible amount of work on their advisory model to create those connections between students and teachers. This isn't directly connected to the college planning that you're speaking of.
I can tell you firsthand, it's not, it's not how it's going. The advisory program doesn't do anything to help to get to the college planning. And it really, if you talk to any of the kids, the model's kind of a waste of time. They.
Well, the, the data that we have doesn't show that.
What's the data? What data?
The young ladies who came and presented earlier tonight came and presented about the advisory model and were speaking glowingly about it.
We also presented last, we also presented this fall about.
I'm shocked because I work with all of the kids and I haven't heard anybody speak glowingly about it.
Those two young ladies did.
I, I, those two, I, I go into the classrooms and I mean, they're, they're coloring and they're doing yoga until night, but they're not really involved in the. Sorry.
Excuse me. Can, can, can we please?
It's true. I'm sorry. I.
No, I mean, Denise.
I'm telling you what I see personally.
I'm, I'm hearing you.
Yeah, thank you.
This is really good to hear because this is how we talk about getting students to be better. So it's, don't ever not be, don't feel you're not heard.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted Jen to weigh in, look a little bit more at what she's seeing or hearing, what you're seeing. And we take that seriously.
And that is all great, but I mean, what I'm seeing firsthand.
And in the budget cycle, probably three out of every four emails that I received
were about the position that you're talking about. So we're, we're hearing you loud and clear.
It's just a huge concern. And you, you see the issues that are at Fowler. Those are coming up here to us.
And what we've talked about sort of in general, and I don't want to, I'm not really the one that knows what the positions are, right? But the need for more student support, right? So it's not just putting everyone in attention all the time, but actually support. And that's more of a Fowler thing really. But student support, so whether it's guidance and all those things that go into there, we have to be doing this. Like, you can just see as a nation, we need to be doing this. So I think what I was saying before about restoring is really more adding. So.
And I guess that goes back to my original, if we're adding at Fowler, why take away from the.
I think this Fowler is bleeding and the high school.
My fear though is that you're going to patch up Fowler and the high schools drastically.
That's fairly fair.
It's very fair. And it never ends. And that's what we, that's why we want the feedback. It may not seem like it, but we actually honestly want the feedback, like when you emailed. This is what we need to hear. And it matters. So I appreciate you sharing it.
Okay. And I'm going to add one more thing about, the email that I sent was about the engineering program.
Right.
My oldest son had John Molaga. He actually ended up not going to school. He applied to five top engineering schools, got into all of them. I know that a big piece of that was John Molaga. I talked to him about coming to the meeting tonight. That's not why I was coming here tonight. It was more about this. But my son, instead of going to college, has chosen to take time off and travel. But he's also been restoring a 40-year-old 31-year-old bus. And tonight, when I said I was on my way here, he said, should I drive the bus over so they can see what the engineering program has done? Because everything he's done is things that he's learned from John Molaga years. So, but I know that's another budget and staffing and that's something to do with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Denise.
Hi, Valerie Matheson. I just wanted to say I really appreciate the fact that you put the safety update on the agenda this evening. I was really glad to get that information. It was a little disappointing to have it abruptly stopped. And very difficult to switch gears from imagining your six-year-old in an active shooter situation to career information.
It felt that way at here.
So hopefully that will be a topic on an upcoming agenda.
I whispered to Dawn that I felt awful about doing it. We were just, and that's the first time in my five years on the committee that we've had to do that. But only because we had someone waiting. And I do mean it very sincerely when I want to bring it back. I'm a professional educator. It's one of the first things that I think about every day. It's the last thing I think about when I go to that.
And I, I can imagine. I mean, I can imagine, but I can't.
I, I teach in a high school of almost 2,500. So it's.
And at the, at the beginning of the question section, you mentioned to only bring up topics that are on the agenda.
Or suggestions.
As sort of a new parent to the public school system, because my oldest is in kindergarten, what is the appropriate means of communication? Because I brought something up the last meeting that was not on the agenda, that I still have questions and concerns about. And I don't know what the appropriate avenue and means of communication is for that.
So simply put, as chair, I'm sort of the person that funnels agenda items and works with both Dr. Girardi and his secretary, Colleen, to set the agenda for future meetings. So by all means, please email me. I've got the at maynard.k12 address, just the same as everybody else in the district. You can also just go straight to Dr. Girardi or Ms. Goddett. We, we respond to email. I respond to email all hours of the day and night. So.
Okay. And do you prefer, does everyone? Okay, and do you prefer, does everybody prefer that the committee and the superintendents are on the same communication or?
Well, the bylaws are that the two of us would work on it. So if you email the two of us, we'll get the information between the two of us. And we work on the agenda together.
All right.
When we get a, when we get a group email, and this is getting into the weeds of law, we can't all respond because we would be in big trouble. That's open meeting law. So that's why, even if you don't know, like a lot of people have emailed one of us and then we funnel it over to these guys. So you don't have to know. Like we'll help, like whoever you get will help you get to the right place.
Thank you.
So we don't expect everyone to know, it's a lot.
Absolutely.
As a, as a follow-up to that, I was going to recommend that we have that safety presentation every year.
Yeah, definitely.
Would be what I would like to see.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. It was well done. I think that's very necessary.
Yes, one of the things we didn't get a chance to say, our business director is working with us. Last year, if you remember, we had a wonderful evening where we talked about school finance and people participated. Where in the process of scheduling for the fall, oh wait, for the fall, the same exact thing on school safety. It will not only be the active shooter, but it will also be health and wellness and health and safety throughout the whole thing. It sounds very, very exciting. A number of parents can be part of that and I think it will be enlightening to everybody.
Yeah, so just as a reminder, we had our finance director, it's, it's an interactive program about finance, but there's also an interactive program about safety. So it's going to be a very exciting program, even more so than just a PowerPoint presentation and question and answers.
It's a, it's the same like mapping procedure that I did at the finance of your future night, but instead it gives the community the opportunity to come in and have an open discussion about the different aspects of student safety and student health developments. And it gives the opportunity to work with administration, with the safety committee. I also have given it to, because I'm part of the LEPC, to the fire chief, to the police chief. They also are interested in participating in this mapping, so it will be a community event more so, where you'll get to come in and, you know, see what the plan is now and discuss, you know, things about the plan. I know some of you had made comments about, you know, if this happens or what we can do here or whatever. This will be the perfect opportunity to have those kind of discussions together as a community.
Hi. Full disclaimer, for missing that today, so 30 K this year. So I'm thinking about mental health and what's going on at Fowler. And how over the summer, we all read Ross Green's work, right? And, and we had this book discussion and, and then I didn't hear anything else and I just assumed that we're training teachers. I'm correctly going through Calm and Compassionate Teaching, which is the follow-up to his work and how to actually implement it in schools, and it's been actually eye-opening. So when I look at Fowler and when I hear that we're hiring another administrator, my initial reaction was, oh my God, we're going back to punishing students rather than looking at their student needs and how we can support that. And I don't want to make that assumption. So I'm just wondering how that approach is working at Fowler? What kind of training are we providing to the staff? And how does the new hiring of these extra administrators fit in with the view and the goal for the district?
Terrific question. Great question. Great observations.
Jen Robson.
Jen Robson. Well, so I'll add that, you know, you really need multi-approaches to help solve problems. And punishments are there to provide justice and solace for victims. You have to have some punishment for some things. However, we also need proactive approaches, which you articulately pointed out, and we have processes in place. And so there's been a desire from our community to have some, and I wouldn't say punishments, but consequences. Because sometimes consequences aren't punishments, but they're learning experiences. So I don't know if that helps. But it, we are doing both, and that's just the reality of most schools.
And Jen, PBIS.
So there is absolutely a commitment to the work that you spoke of, the social emotional learning and growth. The reality is if we can, we can discipline a student all day long or provide consequences or all the, you know, whatever words you want to use, it's not going to change the behavior. And there's plenty of research and data that supports that. You know, so I think it's important that we, we learn that and we know that. However, there are moments and times where things need to stop. And Dr. Girardi and I have certainly had some heated conversations about how to move forward and how to make sure that we are having that empathetic lens that we look through so that students are learning and able to develop the skills that they need in order to be successful. So there is 100% a commitment to, to that work, both through PBIS, which is, we really see that as our first level where we're establishing expectation, teaching the students the expectations, and then being clear about what happens when you meet or don't meet those expectations. Even in Dr. Green's work, if that piece is not there within institutions, the CPS model isn't as effective. So that's the work that we're doing, both in Green Meadow and Fowler. Again, 100% committed to that. We are continuing to train service providers and teachers who, service providers for sure and teachers who are interested in, deeply in Dr. Green's work with the advanced training. And I wasn't aware of that training that you spoke of, so I would love to hear that.
We got a grant, that's how we did it.
Yeah.
And then certain teachers were selected to, to go for the training.
Yeah.
And it has been extremely interesting. The second you said the word punishment, for me, I'm like, wait, let's talk about this for a second, right? Because punishment is not work.
Yes.
Right? It's really finding what it is that that student needs, the reason for that behavior and supporting this student to make a different choice.
And I want to clarify, I agree with you that consequences, I just used punishment because we were talking punishment, you mentioned punishment. Consequences won't change behavior. The programs you're talking about will change behavior. But there are times when consequences, we all have to face some consequences for our, natural consequences for our actions. Sometimes there are times when consequences are needed to provide justice for victims and that has to happen. And we've had a call from parents to address our handbook, we're working on it over the summer. Some of the issues that we've had with cell phones, we need to start clarifying what the consequences are because it's disrupting the educational environment. And so even though we sometimes have heated arguments, I do agree with both of you that we need to put something in place to change behavior and to help students prevent them from happening to get consequences. It's the, it's, but on occasion, consequences are necessary.
Well, even the book, Ross Green's book said that, there are times that you just-
When it comes to safety, I have that same excuse that time.
Yeah, yeah, yes. That's the point I make.
This is what happens, sure. And I just want to throw out there, when we're looking at victims, that we should really be looking at restorative justice and not, let's punish this kid because he did something wrong. We should be looking at the victim and figuring out what it is that the victim needs, again, what the student needs, rather than, here's the consequence because you knew the rule. So I would very, very much just like to see more communication with the parents of students who have been somehow violent, right? Because what I hear a lot in the community is parents being unhappy with how the district responded. And part of me feels, if you look at, at it through the lens of restorative justice, that no parent or child should be walking away feeling that the decision was unfair.
We've actually reached out to, we've actually reached out, our police department works with an organization, I can't remember the name of it, for restorative justice. So we've reached out to them, they have a school-based group. And so it is something we're looking at in terms of how we can do it. We actually are trying to put something in place with a facilitator for a situation that we're currently dealing with for exactly that reason. The, the real punishment is that the, these folks have to talk to the person that they hurt about, about that incident. So we are looking at that piece in terms of training our own staff in those processes. There's a limit to the number of components we can put in, in a moment, but that is absolutely on the list of restorative practices or sort of, you know, however you want to phrase all of these different pieces so that we can prevent them. So absolutely.
So what you're saying is you don't want to punish kids, you don't want them to have consequences, and this is the initiative you've taken, this is what you've been doing. But now Fowler is a disaster, so you have to hire a disciplinarian coming in. At what point are you going to say that's not working anymore? Because I've gone through the point where my kid, something's happened to her, there's been no discipline, and they want her to sit down with the person who spit at them. She doesn't need to sit down with the person who spit at them to make you guys feel better about it. She's a victim. That doesn't solve anything.
Right. So a lot of the work around the collaborative and proactive solutions, which is Dr. Green's work, it, this isn't just sort of making us feel better or what we want to try. There is research and evidence. This is work that has, has been in place in the juvenile justice system in Maine where they had four full institutions and they reduced those institutions by implementing this process down to two. If you've ever worked in a juvenile justice or seen students in a juvenile justice area, those are some of your heaviest hitters. This is work, this is stuff that does work with those students to teach those skills. So, so it, I understand that if done improperly, a restorative justice model creates more harm than it does good. And that is part of why we are not sort of just telling people to do restorative justice principles. It is something that is incredibly complex to make sure that you are facilitating a conversation in a way that the perpetrator or the alleged perpetrator and the victim are able to walk away from, from the conversation with a lesson learned and an apology taken, and not just an apology of, I'm, I'm sorry, but a wrong that has been righted. And those are the, the pieces of the restorative justice principles. Restorative justice actually started in the criminal justice system where law enforcement officers and courts were finding that criminals were committing, people who were going simply to jail sentences had a significant amount of recidivism where they were re-offending. And when they put these restorative justice principles in place, the people who went through these programs are, are not re-offending in those same ways. So it, it's not just something that we are crafting or that we're creating to feel better. I know it may look that way and I'm not trying to take away the, the pain that your family has felt or that your daughter has felt. But what I want to do is I want to change the culture and I want to change the behaviors. And the, we know through research in Massachusetts nationally, that traditional discipline of you do something and you get a punishment of a detention or a suspension does not decrease or change the behavior.
It changed mine. When I was younger enough, I got punished and I didn't do that behavior again. I think that most people, the older generation, that happens. You were scared of your principal, you didn't want to go sit down with them, you didn't want to get in trouble. You didn't want to sit out at recess and watch your friends play because you spit at somebody. But now, kids could just get to sit down and tell someone they're sorry, get a piece of candy and they're right back out on the playground playing. And so how long have you had this grand idea that now Fowler is imploding because nobody is held accountable? No kids are held accountable for anything, especially even in Green Meadow. No one's held accountable. And if you ask somebody what happened when they do something to your kid, when they do something in your classroom, the teachers say their hands are tied, it's privacy, I can't tell you anything. Or you say, did anybody talk to this child? I can't tell you anything. Well, that's not fair for a parent. When your kids are coming home saying this stuff keeps happening and so-and-so keeps throwing staplers and ruining the classroom and so-and-so took his clothes off in the classroom. So now my kid, who is just trying to do their work, suffers because you guys don't want to punish everybody and want to keep everyone in the classroom.
Excuse me, can I, can I just ask you to, just, it's not in us and a you, we are all in this together? And I just-
We don't feel that way. Nobody feels that way. I'm sorry that you want to say that, but no one feels that way.
No, that's fine. So what we normally do, and this is meant with all the sincerity, is you should meet with Dr. Girardi. I mean, if you're not feeling that you're getting any sort of satisfaction-
Yeah, that doesn't work.
Yes, that's not helpful either. So let's all be adults.
Be adults.
All. This is the last comment for tonight. Because I'm done getting nailed up for, this is nonsense. All right, so Nikki, really, let's put you with the right people. I mean, this is great, we want to know.
I've talked to the principal there too and it just keeps coming back to me, it's nothing going to happen and-
We're, so we're updating the bullying policies, we're updating the student violence-
And I don't think it's bullying, I'm not saying the instances that happen in bullying.
No, 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 no.
I think that term is thrown around for every instance now it's called bullying.
And I agree, it's not, it's rarely bullying. It's mostly mean behavior, which is another whole thing. What I'm saying, and, and this is just because, you know, not everyone knows what we're doing. But like with the committee I was on this year, we looked at bullying and we realized it's not always bullying, just like you said. A lot of it is the code of conduct that we allow our kids to have. So while you're hearing about restorative justice is one thing. What he said was, there's many things we're using.
Right.
Because you know what? Some kids do need to be told, you don't get to be with your friends at the table, at the cafeteria, if you're going to say these inappropriate things to the staff.
Right.
So I just, sorry, no, I'm not done. So I just want you to, I'm sorry, I'm not mad.
No, that's okay. No, I agree with her in some degree.
But just so you know, like, it is not just this like pat-on-the-head stuff. Like I wouldn't send my kid here if I didn't feel he was safe, because he's much more of a tender heart, that's all you all know. So it's not that or that, it's whatever that kid needs. And I know it's not perfect. And then part of the reason it's not perfect is we literally don't have enough bodies anymore. Dan's not going to fix everything, but he's another full-time body in that building. We didn't ask him to come in and be a disciplinarian. We asked him to come in and do the work that needs to be done. So we can help with these kids. And I'm not trying to quell anything. But it's really, it's, if you're not getting satisfaction, tell me. And we'll put you in touch with the right people, but-
I appreciate it. It's just hard to hear constantly all this, you know, these manly panty and these ideas that everyone's going to be great and we can sit down and hug each other out.
No.
It doesn't work like that in the real world.
Right.
It doesn't. And if somebody wrongs me, I don't always want to sit down with them and I shouldn't have to. And I said that to Principal Shay. Abby does not, never one, she didn't even want to tell me what happened because she didn't want to get called out of class and have to sit down and she shouldn't have to.
Right.
But it doesn't need to be brushed either if somebody spits at someone, that's assault. You don't get to go to the playground the next day.
Right.
You sit down, now you watch all your friends play, guess what? They're not spitting, so they comply.
Right. No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
Thank you.
And we do really hear it. I know it doesn't seem like it, but really, we do, and that's how change ma, is made. So I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, thank you, everyone.